Good evening. It's the first San Bruno Planning Commission meeting of 2015, January 6, 7:00 p.m. Roll call, please.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Samad.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Commissioner Biassari.
Here.
Thank you.
For the first meeting of the year, I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is number one, approval of the minutes. Seeing as we have no minutes to approve, I understand from staff that they'll be ready for the next meeting. Without objection, we'll move on to item number two, communications.
And Chair Peterson, there are no additional communications this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is public comment on items not on the agenda. So if there's an item that you would like to address the commission on that is not on the agenda, this is your time. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, announcement of conflict of interest. Any commissioners have a conflict? Okay. Item number five, A, Crestmore Neighborhood. This is a request that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Castle Companies, Inc., for the development of 10 lots within the Crestmore neighborhood. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Peterson, members of the Planning Commission. I'll be delivering the initial report this evening. I'm the city attorney. David Waltering may have some additional comments after I've completed my short presentation. So let me start by saying I'm going to divide my comments tonight into three topic areas. The first area is what is a development agreement and why are you here tonight? What are you doing with the development agreement? The second topic area is what are the provisions of this agreement actually is applied to Castle and Companies? And then the third topic area is what are the next steps? So I'll go through all of those three topic areas and then David may have some additional comments. Before I start, though, I wanted to indicate what we're not here to do tonight. We are not here, the Planning Commission is not reviewing plans or architectural elevations or details for the houses that Castle is going to build. So you might be asking yourselves, when, when are we going to do that? When is the public going to be able to comment on that? And the answer is, on the 22nd of this month, excuse me, 21st of this month, there will be a community meeting in the neighborhood. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Great, a neighborhood meeting at which the developer will be present along with staff and will present those architectural features to the community. Those plans, after receiving public comment at that meeting on the 21st, will come to a second public meeting or to a second meeting at the Architectural Review Commission and then will be coming to a public meeting at the Planning Commission. So there will be all of those opportunities for all of you members of the public who are here tonight and anybody else in the community who wishes to discuss those plans to do it at that time. This meeting tonight is to do something rather more technical and legalistic, which is why I'm here doing it mostly instead of David, and that is recommending the adoption of an ordinance to the City Council to approve a development agreement. So what's a development agreement? A development agreement is a document between the city and a developer that does two things. For the developer, it freezes the city's rules and regulations so the city can't change the rules after the developer has started the process. So in other words, if city rules say you can build a 2,500-square-foot house, the development agreement prevents the city from saying, sorry, we've changed our minds, now you can only build a thousand-square-foot house. So it freezes those development standards for the developer. At the same time, what the city gets out of a development agreement is certainty that the project is going to be completed the way the city envisioned. And where did the city envision or how did it envision the project to be completed? The answer to that is, it sent out a request for proposals to basically the entire development community and the City Council selected Castle as the preferred developer for this project because the City Council believed Castle could execute and build all 10 homes at approximately the same time while also following all of the city rules that were set out in the development agreement. So that's what a development agreement is and that's what this does. And so we're going to talk about that in a little more detail. But why are you here reviewing it tonight? It's the first meeting of the month. You usually don't meet on that time. It's an unusual time to get together. Why is that? And the answer is because some months ago, the city and PG&E and then separately, the city, excuse me, PG&E and Castle Companies entered into agreements to, for Castle to purchase those 10 lots. So the city has three of them that it's going to sell to Castle. PG&E has seven of them that it's going to sell to Castle. And that purchase and sale agreement or those two agreements were signed and escrow has been opened and Castle has made an initial deposit into that escrow. That agreement says that escrow on the sale of those lots needs to close by the middle of April. And in order for that to happen, the City Council has to approve this development agreement via ordinance by the end of this month. Well, there are two City Council meetings this month. One of them's next week and one of them's two weeks later. And two meetings are needed for the first and second reading of an ordinance. So that's why you're here tonight at the very first meeting of the month, looking at this development agreement to recommend to the City Council that it be adopted via ordinance. So the council will take your comments and your recommendations. At the next meeting, at their next meeting next week, will presumably introduce an ordinance for this development agreement. There'll be a public hearing so everybody can show up again and make their comments. And then at the second meeting in January, the City Council will consider adoption of that ordinance. And then once that's in effect and other terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreements are solidified, then Castle can close escrow. So that's the reason why you're here tonight. So moving to the second topic, what does this development agreement actually do? And the first thing that it does is it requires the developer to follow all of the city's existing rules and regulations about architectural features and especially the size of each of the houses that may be constructed on the lots. The request for proposal that was sent out to all developers said, for all of these lots, 1, 2, 3 through 10, however many there are, you can only build up to a X-square-foot house. And that square footage was determined strictly by the city's current zoning code. The development agreement also says that the developer may not request a use permit, variance, or exception to increase those house sizes. You see a lot of those applications and you saw some of them during the rebuilding in the Glenview area. But the city was very concerned when it issued its RFP that these infill lots be developed consistently with the patterns that are already there in the neighborhood. And those development patterns are expressed in the city's code. So that's the reason why it's in the development agreement that the developer has to comply with those, with those rules and regulations. The second thing the development agreement does is it sets some dates that both the developer and the city have to follow. So the developer has already worked with staff to submit plans and city is required to review and approve those plans on a certain timetable, the ultimate goal of which is that the developer would complete construction of all of the homes within about six months of the issuance of building permits. There is one home that's an exception because of topographical conditions and it's spelled out in the, in the report, that may take a little longer. But all of the other homes must be completed within about 180 days of issuance of building permits. And it's anticipated in the development agreement, those building permits will be issued on a strict timetable after the staff review of the plans, the public's review of the plans, the architectural committee's review of the plans, and the planning commission's review. So after all those things happen and it's approved, building permits can then be issued. So that's the second thing the development agreement does, size of the houses, dates. The third thing it does is it sets the fees that the developer is required to pay to the city at the same level and extent as the fees that every other developer would otherwise have to pay. So in other words, there are no breaks or concessions about any of the development fees that would be owed to the city. So those are the basic provisions of the development agreement. There, as you can see, there are a bunch of other legal terms in it. But basically, it says, as long as the developer does those things, the city can't change the rules in the middle of the game. So we can't come along after they've closed escrow on their properties and decide that the building envelope is different or that the square footage is going to be different or that instead of, you know, this style, we want that style. So those are the kinds of things that are set in the development agreement. That's what that provides. So what are the next steps, then? Assuming you review the development agreement, it's a recommendation to the City Council, what's going to happen next? Well, the developer has submitted some plans, as I understand it. Staff is reviewing those plans. Architectural Review Commission will review them after the community meeting. Planning Commission will review them. And then by then, the developer should be able to close escrow, should be able to meet their deadline of closing escrow by the middle of April. And it's our understanding that the developer is very motivated, this is one of the reasons why the city selected them, to start work on most or all of the houses right away after issuance of building permits. In fact, it says within 30 days. And I apologize, I, David pointed out a typo. There's one place that says 60, but it's actually 30 days from issuance of building permits, to start on those homes and get them completed as soon as possible. So David may have some additional comments, but that concludes my comments at the moment.
My additional comments are really to reinforce, pardon me, reinforce the comments that our city attorney made. And that is that there will be subsequent hearings and meetings to review the proposed architectural plans for the project. The staff has been working with Castle Companies for some time now, reviewing preliminary plans. We spent time even earlier this week, yesterday, reviewing these plans. We expect to move forward and we'll send out public notices for the neighborhood meeting coming up on January 21st. We're then expecting to have an Architectural Review Committee meeting in February. The tentative date for that is February 12th. And then on to Planning Commission, the tentative date for that meeting is in March and that would be March 27th. We would hope to be issuing building permits if everything is found acceptable going through that review process. We would hope to issue building permits sometime in May. And as our city attorney has indicated, we'd be looking at about a six-month construction period with the intent, again, if, if the plans are reviewed and found acceptable, the construction period would be about six months for at least nine of the homes, which means that the homes would be completed by the end of November of this year. So the intent really would be that the plans would be reviewed, permits issued, construction commenced, and construction complete if everything's found acceptable by the end of this year. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the staff report and this is a public hearing. This is a time, if you have anything to say on this item, you-
Through the chair.
Please.
Before we do the public comment, I have a question.
Yes, if you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. I have just one.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this falls under Mark or David's responsibilities, but in the report, under Terms of Development Agreement, item F says that the developer, in short, will complete construction within 180 days following issuance of the building permits. And on the, in the agreement, item, what is that? 6.5, I think it is, yeah, 6.5, the development timing, the first paragraph says that the developer shall simultaneously begin a diligently thereafter pursuit of complete construction of all 10 homes within 60 days of issuance of building permits by the city, which is then followed by item F under that saying that they should be completed within 180 days. I'm assuming that that 60-day one is a typo.
Correct. That's what I was referring to in my initial comments and we'll, we'll make sure that's corrected before it gets to the City Council.
Any other commission questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassari.
Just out of curiosity, David, what's holding up that one, the night, or the 10th property from being done at the same time?
You know, we've been talking to the developers representative about that. It's Lot 10. It's a steep lot and is going to require a different design, a more intricate, more complex design, and in turn will take more time to actually construct that home. In talking to the applicant, though, their intent would be to try to design and build that home within the overall six-month, 180-day timeframe. They're asking, though, for an additional 90 days just in case, given the topography, they're going to have to cut into that slope a little bit and create a terrace to put that home in. Again, it's Lot 10, it's fairly steep. So they're asking for a little bit of margin on that, but the intent would be to try to complete that home with the other homes within the 180-day period. Thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Chase.
So then, to go with what Commissioner Samad mentioned, then I guess on the second page of the report, third paragraph there under the Terms of Development, that one also states 60 days, but that's the typo as well. So both of those, then, need to be correct.
We were, we were at least consistent in our error. That's correct.
Correct. Thanks.
You know, to be clear, the intent is that within 30 days of issuance of a building permit, the developer will commence construction. And within 180 days of issuance of the building permit, the intent is that the homes would be completed with the exception of the home on Lot 10 where there's a bit of margin.
Okay. I have a question. Is the developer here? Are they going to make a presentation?
The developer is here. They're available to answer any questions. Harry Burrows is also here, city consultant who is in charge of construction in the area.
Okay, but there's not a-
There's no formal presentation by the developer.
No formal presentation, okay. Oftentimes, oftentimes, the reason I ask that question is oftentimes, the applicant for a permit or an agreement has a presentation to give during the public hearing or prior to the public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing. Anybody who has a comment, please step to the podium, give your street name and you have up to three minutes.
Jerry Gernsy, live on Concord Way, next to one of the development homes. And I'm just curious if this 10-house development is going to slow down the streets and sidewalks and all that construction for this year?
We're, we're able to take public input at this time, but it's not part of our role to answer those questions. I'm going to ask staff to make some notes of the questions that come up during the public hearing and ask them to give some responses to those at the end, if that would be okay. Thank you very much, sir. Next person, please.
Sharon Baum, Claremont Drive.
Oh, please, please step to the podium because we have a microphone and there are people who won't be able to hear you if you're not there. Thank you very much.
Sharon Baum, Claremont Drive. My question is, is this Castle Company the same company that you've been dealing with that was supposed to start a year ago? Somebody at this table, if you had to answer that?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just answer that by saying, I don't know where you got the impression that they were supposed to start a year ago. They were supposed to start once both the city and PG&E finalized a purchase and sale agreement with them for the purchase of the lots. The city was ready to do that a while ago. PG&E was not ready to do that when the city was ready. And so there was a delay as a result of that. But now both parties are ready to proceed and both parties were necessary to open the escrow and that's what's happened.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Next, next person. If there, my sense is there may be several other people who would like to speak if you would, please come to the podium. If you would move toward the podium, it would save us some, a little, few minutes of time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Barr. I live on Concord Way in San Bruno. My question is the choice of Castle Company. Were there other companies that, that were applying? About several of them at least?
I'd be happy to address that. There were indeed. The City Council at public hearings, public meetings, engaged in a thorough and comprehensive selection process. A great deal of time and effort was spent on that. The city did not accept the company that offered the highest price for the lots, nor did it accept the company that offered the lowest price for the lots. It agreed ultimately on the developer that they thought was the most responsible and could complete the project in a timely manner once building permits were issued and had the financial capability of doing that. But there was a great deal of consideration and thought given to that, both internally at staff and at public meetings. And all of those documents are available on the, on the website. We can get that for you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much. Barbara Passion on Claremont Drive. I'm wondering how much the lots were sold for and what are the price ranges of the homes going to be?
So I'd be happy to take, answer the first one. Sorry, Chair Peterson, I know you said we're, we're not necessarily answering questions right now, but we may as well do the ones that we can. The first question, by the way, we'll ask Harry Burrows to, to come up on the very first speaker. But in response to your question, the city's purchase and sale agreement with Castle Companies is a matter of public record and the sale price is $415,000 for, for each of the city lots. We, we don't know and the request for proposals and Castle's proposal did not specify how much are they selling the, the finished homes for. So that's not a requirement of the development agreement. It was not part of the request for proposals that was issued to the developers.
Any other speakers? I don't, I don't want to keep anyone from speaking. Usually when there are this many people, there might be one more or two. Thank you, sir.
I don't know if this is too early or not, but I'd like to know, is the 180 days including Saturdays and Sundays?
The answer to that question is yes. It's 180 calendar days.
They're going to be working Saturdays and Sundays?
Well, that's, I didn't understand that that was your question. That's a different question.
Well, I don't agree with you.
The 180 days is calendar days. They can only work on the days that are allowed by City of San Bruno ordinance. And David can address that.
Well, when they built the top of the hill, they had to go by the five-day-a-week. But yet, yet the only contractors locally work Saturday and Sunday. One guy next door had things going on all the time. So we'd just like to know that.
Thank you.
The, the construction hours are typically weekdays, Monday through Friday, typically. The developer can ask for additional time, but that would have to be specially granted.
But just to ask staff to clarify that answer, there's no prohibition of working on a Saturday or a Sunday, then?
Definitely not on a Saturday. But again, there would be a need for a request for special permission to do that. So typically, our workdays would be Monday through Friday.
Elizabeth Coons, Claremont Drive. Why are they exempt from environmental impact reports?
Oh, that's an excellent question. I can answer that as well. So residential developments and replacement of existing residential homes are what's called categorically exempt from SEQA, which is the law that you're referring to. So that means when somebody's house burns down and you want to rebuild your house, you don't have to go through any environmental review. And that's the case here. The staff made a determination that this project is really no different, 10 infill lots is no different than building one house at a time for which no environmental review would, would be required. And so that's the reason why staff is recommending in the staff report that you decide, similar to all of the other reconstructions that you've decided on, that the project is categorically exempt, does not require environmental review. Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassari.
So we're saying that the same exemption that we gave everybody else is what's carrying forward on these new homes?
That is correct, yes.
So everybody who's built already that we've given that exemption to are just carrying that forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public care to make a comment?
I think we'll have Harry Burrows address the question of the first speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Harry Burrows. I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. So the question I believe that Mr. Gernsy asked was, is the construction of these homes going to impact in any way the construction of the, or the final phase of reconstruction of the neighborhood, the streets and the sidewalks? And it will not. We've got two major phases of construction left in the neighborhood, reconstruction. The first is the upper lateral replacement project. There's about 190 homes that the city will be going out to construction with here shortly. We're actually coming to City Council next week with a request for the City Council to award a construction contract for those 190 upper laterals within the neighborhood, upper sewer laterals. As we speak, we're in the process of putting together the final bid package for what we're calling our Phase Four project, which is all of the surface improvements left in the neighborhood, the roadway reconstruction, curb gutter, sidewalk replacement, and the new streetlights. We're planning on going out to bid with that project in February timeframe, February, March, with a bid opening in April and that construction start in May. So that, that construction will be going concurrent with the home construction, but we don't anticipate that there will be any, you know, serious overlap issues within the neighborhood.
The public hearing is still open and if you have a question or a comment on your mind, is the podiums available?
Carolyn Gray, corner of Claremont and Fairmont. My question is that you had mentioned here that there was going to be a public meeting held in our neighborhood. I'd like to know where. We don't really have a meeting place and we've tried it in the firehouse and we, it got so hot that somebody passed out during the meeting. There were no chairs. So I'd kind of like to know where you're planning to have it because we have several elderly people that want to attend and it isn't feasible to have it there.
Good question.
The, the neighborhood meeting that we spoke about that we're planning to hold on January 21st will be at John Muir School. And then we also mentioned that subsequently, there would be an Architectural Review Committee meeting. We typically hold our Architectural Review Committee meetings at City Hall on El Camino Real, 567 El Camino Real. We expect to have that meeting about February 12th and that would typically be in room 115. The Planning Commission meeting that we're expecting, planning to have in March would be here at the Senior Center. And we're looking at a, a date of March, I'm sorry, March 27th, that's correct. No, make sure that's right. March 17th, actually, for that meeting date. So again, John Muir School for the neighborhood meeting, City Hall for the Architectural Review Committee, and the Planning Commission meeting will be here in this room. And there will be notices sent out, as you receive notices, many of you hopefully receive notices for this meeting, we'll be sending out notices to the public regarding all of those meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it any other comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, without objection. I'll close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and a motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
I guess I'll make a motion that we recommend adoption of Resolution 2015-01 and, and everything that goes with it. that goes with it, wow.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-1, which is recommending the city council adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Castle Companies. Is there any discussion on this before I call for a roll call vote? Okay, hearing none. Staff, would you call the roll?
Chair Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Samut?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
Commissioner Beasodi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's the end of the Item 5A Crestmore Neighborhood, and I'd like to address the public gathered here to comment that there is, it's not totally unprecedented, but it's a very unusual opportunity to come yourselves and invite your neighbors to the presentations in the neighborhood, at the Architectural Review Committee and at the Planning Commission. So I'd recommend your attendance if you have an interest, thank you very much.
Through the chair. Is there an appeal period?
There's no appeal period to this decision, because it's a recommendation to the city council.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Item 6 discussion, 6A, city staff discussion.
No discussion items from city staff this evening.
Okay. 6B, Planning Commission discussion. Item 7 is adjournment, thank you for coming, the meeting's adjourned.